Commission to order. Calling the planning commission to order for the secretary call the role, please.
Mr. Yule.
As it's.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Here.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Here.
Sir Calder.
Here.
Mr. Signor.
Yeah.
Chairman Denny.
Here.
Mr. Comenzos.
Here.
Mr. Tingley.
Here.
Mr. Tingley is here. Yeah, okay. Uh. I need a motion to accept the then as the last meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Collins.
I'll second.
Make it by Mr. Del Sandro.
Lynn Flansburg.
Hey, I'm sorry, Lynn. I'm looking at the camera. I'm sorry. I'm looking up. I'm looking at him in back. One of those nights again, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh. Chairman Denny, you want me to call for the vote?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried, I hope. Okay. First thing on the agenda tonight is Luis Diaz. Ninety-three West Campbell Road. The applicant requests a waiver of site plan review to host a car show on June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one in parking lot E, southern portion of the former Kmart lot of Viaport Rotterdam. Luis is on, I believe. Luis, you're on, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, well, I'm gonna see, I wanna ask some of the plan, or I'm gonna ask the planning board members if they have any questions or any comments they would like to make. Mr. Yule.
No, it's good to see that some light down there. I went through that parking lot the other day to look at it and there weren't ten cars in there. Shoppers are not gonna, gonna take up your parking spaces, that's for sure. Be nice to have it in there.
Yeah, okay, uh. Mr. Collins.
No, it's always a good event. People enjoy car shows, so I got no problem with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Del Sandro.
Yeah, I have no problem. It'd be nice to see that down there. I actually might attend it myself.
He might have something to bring down here, right? Yeah.
Yep.
So. Mr. Calder.
Well, I have no issues with it at all. Thank you.
And Mr. Signor.
I'm good, Jack.
Outstanding. And Ms. Flansburg, sorry.
Uh, no questions. I look forward to seeing it. I might attend as well.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, Mr. D, how many, how many cars you planning have there?
So, um. I've been hosting shows for so long, uh, at this point, I'm in the position to say, I don't know. Um, uh. I know for sure that I'm not gonna be expecting a thousand cars, but I'm not, I'm for sure that I'm not gonna be expensive, spending less than fifty.
Okay.
I can give you like maybe a hundred and fifty cars, just spitballing, cuz, uh. Something that I've learned doing this is it all depends on promo. Um. So, yeah, I wanna say a hundred and fifty cars. But like I said, I cannot give you a, a precise amount, cuz I really don't know until the day comes.
Well, that doesn't sound like a bad number anyway, one fifty. That's quite a few cars. And, uh, any else besides the show, I mean, is there gonna be any kind of swap meets or anything like that going on there?
Um, we're gonna have a food truck. Um, uh, the guy is, uh, part of our club. He's gonna be selling food also. I'm gonna be having a craft, uh, vending site also, which my wife is gonna be taking care of. We, uh, do keychains and everything is handcrafted with resins, vinyl stickers and all that. Um, we're gonna have the DJ settings, uh, for the music and, and, and whatever we need to use, the microphone for like present trophies and, and present the winners. Um. Cars are gonna be just parked. Uh, there's not gonna be no movement unless, uh, the, the drivers are gonna leave the lot, you know, go buy something out of the premises. But other than that, cars are gonna be on the parking spot. Uh, we're gonna be having all members of my team, we're gonna be working the lot. Uh, we're like almost twenty-seven members. Uh, we're gonna be working all around the place. Um. We're planning on staying an hour late just to clean up after ourselves. Um. So far, that's what I can tell you. I got nothing else planned out as in having more people like doing, uh, vending or such.
How about the hours of when is it gonna start, when is it gonna end?
So, we're gonna be starting the show officially at one o'clock. Um, I'm gonna be there, of course, uh, uh, an hour earlier just to set up, but we're gonna be starting at one o'clock. Uh, we're, the show will be ending around fi- four-thirty to five o'clock.
Okay, uh, at this time, I need a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Collins.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Yule. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, the next thing on the agenda. Robert Avitallo, contract Bendy, twenty-three seventy Curry Road. Gets limited site plan review for the construction of sixty-six apartments on nine-point-five-nine acre parcel. Engineer ABD Engineering, LLP, Luigi. Is here, I believe. From ABD. I don't see him on the. Luigi, are you here?
This is Bob. I believe, uh, Dave should be here from ABD. Dave, are you there?
I think he's muted.
Yeah, I'm here. There it goes. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Oh, Dave, you're here instead of Luigi for ABD, right?
That's right.
Okay, you got some things you wanna go over with us?
Yep. So, um. I don't know if I can share my screen.
You got a comment, a comment list from us?
Um, I did, yeah. Is it possible to share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead for sure.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm. Okay, I see it. Okay, can you guys all see the plan?
Yep, yep, there we go. Yep.
Okay. So, I know it's been, you know, a little while since you guys have seen this plan. Um. But not a lot has changed since you last seen it. Uh, the plan was reviewed by the TD. And, you know, they had a couple pages of comments that we were able to address. Um, and then we did recently receive, um, just today, the DPW comments, and, um, I can go through those if you'd like.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, it'd be a good idea. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So, number one. In the DPW comments related to, um, the Fireflow test. And I know that the Fireflow tests that we provided. Um, it did indicate only residual pressure of twenty PSI. And obviously, that would be concerning, that might be concerning to, um, the water department. But that twenty PSI that we put on that test was an assumed a number because there was actually a problem with the fire hydrant at the time that we did the test. So, in reality, we got a, a static pressure reading of about fifty-five PSI. And just based on experience, that, that residual pressure that we would get in reality would probably only be about ten PSI below that, which would be more than enough. So, I mean, we can redo that Fireflow test. Um, just to get a more accurate result, but we don't really think that's a problem, and we don't think it's gonna be a problem for the water line that we have proposed as it is.
Well, you might wanna get the fire hydrant fixed.
Yeah.
That might help.
Yeah.
We've had that problem in Rotterdam a lot of places. That fire hydrant is being repaired.
I'd like to see the test re-done to be certain.
Yeah, so would I.
We, you know.
Oh, let me, let me, uh, interject here. I guess, um, the Department of Public Works is gonna require that they, they, uh, go through that WaterCAD modeling that we have through, uh, uh, the HydroCAD.
Right.
Like we've done with the other projects. So, I, I don't know if another, another test is necessary that we would just run it, we would just model what, what they have. The other suggestion from DPW was to loop that water line into the Fort Hunter Road um, system. There's a proposed fire hydrant that's in close proximity there, and, uh, I went out there, took a look, and it looks like that right, that fifteen-foot strip of property that they own as part of this development is, is already cleared, so at least up to the property line. So, the.
Well, that'd be good if there was a water main break, you'd be able to get water from another area.
Correct.
Okay, seemingly we get that problem solved.
Okay.
What else you got on that column that you got?
So, number two is, um, prior to scheduling this project for final site plan approval, the applicant shall provide documentation from Fire District Number Three that the site plan access, hydrant locations, and turning templates have been reviewed and are acceptable. Um, now, we have been in contact with actually both, uh, Fire District Number Three and Fire District Number Two, and this property actually is in both districts. I know it's actually listed, I believe, as being in Fire District Number Three's jurisdiction, but they say no, i- it's Fire District Number Two, and they confirmed that. So, we're actually gonna be meeting with, um, uh, I forgot his name, Andy, uh, the Fire Chief of, uh, Fire District Number Two next week.
Andy Burke.
Yep, Andy Burke.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, you know, they can let us know whether or not the locations of the hydrants are acceptable. And, um, for, I, I don't know if you guys saw the turning template that we submitted, that one, we actually did use the, the largest truck from, uh, District Three. They're the one that has the, the aerial truck, and we showed that going around.
Right.
Um. Okay, and then item number three. Uh, prior to scheduling this project for final site plan approval, the applicant shall provide documentation from NYSDOT, conceptually approving proposed access and utility work in the state right away. Now, um, we have submitted the stage one, the perm thirty-three form to DOT, and, you know, they're, they're looking at it, we hope. They're, they've been pretty slow on a lot of other projects, but they're reviewing it.
Okay.
So. Um, item number four on the grading plan. Um, it looked like there was a little concern that buildings number one, number four, and number five were four, about four feet higher than the current grade. And, um, concerned about the, uh, the stone drip edges being adequate to handle the stormwater. And, uh, for one, we're actually considering lowering the site just about better balance, cut and fill. So, those buildings will in all likelihood be a little bit lower than they are now.
Yeah, we're worrying about the water running off there into the property next door.
And those, those, um, stone drip edges, that detail that we have there, those are sized to handle the one-hundred-year storm.
Okay. Okay, where are we at here? We're lighting.
So, you have number five, the, uh, you know, illumination plot. Um, we are, we will provide a, a photo, a photometric plan for the site. And it will be a little bit different than we have, what we have shown. Um, we are gonna show, actually, we will be showing smaller lamp posts in between the buildings, not, they won't be twelve feet high. And there will be, we will show, um, building mounted lights over the garages. So. To provide a more even and a little bit less intense illumination.
Landscaping.
Right. So, landscaping, um, in general, you know, anything that isn't shown, uh, anything that is shown in, in white, that isn't pavement, is, is gonna be lawn, a lawn area. Um, we do show, you know, we have the shrubs and, and trees shown, and we can provide a little bit more detail just to show that those, there's gonna be like mulched areas around those shrubs.
Right.
But we're not planting any, any unusual ground cover or like stone or anything else.
Okay, well, that landscaping plan will probably be, you know, we'd be interested in seeing that, you know, further.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, let's see, what are we looking at?
Seven.
So, number seven.
Yep.
Um, supplemental landscaping in the form of coniferous trees should be added to the perimeter of the site for additional screening of the single-family residential properties along Curry Road, Barber Drive, and Fort Hunter Road. Now. So. Taking a look at this, you can see that in general, along Barber Drive and on Curry Road, and in the back of these properties here on Fort Hunter Road, we're gonna be leaving a substantial tree buffer along that, along those properties. Um. I mean, it is true that, and this kinda gets into item number eight, that we will be clearing to the property line for ten-ninety-seven Fort Hunter Road and part of ten-fifty-seven Fort Hunter Road, and then for a pretty substantial amount of space, um, on twenty-three-ninety, uh.
Curry Road.
Curry Road, right? So. In the case of twenty-three-ninety Curry Road, yes, I mean, we are gonna be eliminating a large amount of the, pretty much the entire natural buffer there. So, for that, you know, that section of property line, and, and for this portion of this property line on uh, ten-fifty-seven over here on Fort Hunter Road, yes, we will be eliminating s- the, the natural buffer, and the applicant's okay with um, proposing either, either a fence or some additional plannings to help restore that buffer. But in, in, in general, for the the majority of the perimeter of the site, the natural buffer is gonna be remaining.
Yeah, we, we, we would be concerned with those particular areas that you just mentioned, though, for the neighbors, you know?
Yeah.
They don't wanna be looking out there.
Right, and the applicant's okay with that. We're, while we're in areas where we're gonna be completely stripping any buffer, you know, he's okay with either putting a fence in or or, uh, planting a row of trees.
Is he okay with what's satisfactory to the landowner?
Um, I think he's okay with talking to the landowner and figuring out, you know, what is gonna work best.
Okay, uh. I see they're recommending removing the second-story decks on Building One.
Right, and the applicant's okay with that.
They're overlooking the adjoining yards, I believe, right? Where they are.
Yeah, definitely, though, we're there on Building One. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
End up, Curry Road Address House, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and then I think on, on the other side of looking at it, but I'm not sure where it is.
Um, on the other side, it's, uh, it's apartments.
Yeah.
I think they have a deck.
New apartments on it, so, yep. Okay, where we're at now, identifying merit delivery area.
Right, so. Um, there will be a mail kiosk. Um. We're thinking about putting it in the middle uh, near the path leading towards the gazebo. Uh. But as far as, as package delivery, we're thinking that packages are gonna be delivered, the larger stuff is gonna be delivered just to the end, right to the individual units. I mean, they're gonna be numbered, they're gonna each kinda have their own address. They're gonna be, it's gonna go in order. Um. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not looking to put a building there in the middle. And they do have quite a bit of space there in the middle, you know, as far as green space. It's about twelve thousand square feet of green space in the middle. And then you got about at least another ten thousand square feet of, you know, green community space out by the cul-de-sac that, that isn't in the, over the septic area. And we just wanna maximize that.
Okay, uh. Then as we went through all these comments, uh, I'm gonna pull the planning board to see if they have any, any questions. Uh, well, wait a minute, before I do that, uh, uh, Fred Mastriani from GPI is on. Fred, are you on?
Brian Trucco from GPI representing.
Okay, Brian, you have any? Anything, uh? Let me see what I'm looking for.
Yep. I'll, I'll just say, you know, so we, we did take a look at the project. The, the first time it was submitted, it was under, uh, sketch plan review. Um, so we did come up with some comments. We're getting into the second round that we're looking through right now. Probably a couple things we're gonna be looking at a little bit more in detail. Um. Couple questions, you know, maybe while Dave's here, you know, you mentioned screening on the other properties, but what about two thirty-six-four on Curry Road? Will there be any kind of screening in between? Between Buildings Four and Five? There's a really thin line of existing vegetation that looks like it'll get cleared out from this construction.
Um, from the existing apartments?
Yes.
Wait, um. No, we weren't, uh, planning on any, uh, putting any, um, additional screening there.
I guess, I guess our concern was that once you clear up to the property on, there really wouldn't be much left. Uh, the other concern is how close the buildings are to the neighbor's septic field. Um, especially since you're gonna be higher up in elevation and, and dropping stormwater off the backside.
Right, well, that stormwater should not reach, it's designed not to reach that property.
Right, no, there's just concern, there's always concern about infiltration rates being close to septic fields and, and introducing water into the ground. Um. The, the main septic field over near the cul-de-sac, uh, you know, right now, I think you have it designed where it's anticipating connection to, uh, the town sewer system. Is there any kind of date or schedule involved with that connection?
Whenever the town decides to do it.
Fair enough. Well, it, the concern is that typically you would provide expansion areas for the septic fields, you know, knowing that this will eventually be hooked up to the town system. It's just the thinking through the process where, you know, waiving the necessary, you know, the necessity for expansion area, you know, might be applicable.
Thanks. Is all the concerns that you have?
Um. The, on the stormwater side, some of the chambers we were identifying today as being kinda too small, they're just scaled about halfway from what they should be. Um, it's like graphically on the plan at least, you know, the modeling and the stormwater report shows that they treat the amount, but graphically on the plans, they appear half the size. So, that might be something to look into.
Right.
Um, you know, like I said, we're still, still going through our full review. Those are the main comments we kinda came up with at this time. We'll be putting together a more formal letter. Um, I'm thinking by the end of this week, we should be able to wrap that up.
Okay, let me pull the planning board to see if the, any of the members have any comments or questions they may wanna ask. Uh, Mr. Yule.
Um, I've got a question about, you, you're saying that the buffers aren't gonna be cut into. What happens if the buffers really don't work out like they, like we think they're gonna work out? Is the applicant, uh, willing to, um, add to these buffers in case they come out a little thin? I know we got a project over on, uh, Birdex Street right now. Um, that they, they were gonna have a buffer for the neighbors, but once they got finished cutting, uh, the neighbors are now complaining that there's no buffer. So, uh, if you see where I'm going with this, in other words, fine if the trees are gonna be there. But if for some reason they cut a little bit more, or they have to do it for grading or whatever, then maybe we should be looking for some kind of a clause in there saying that, you know, we're willing to supplement these buffers if they, if they come out a little thin. Right now, it's, you look at a bunch of trees and you say, oh, it's, it's gonna be great, but it may not be great. So, that would be my concern down the road. Uh, the project I like, uh, the layout seems to be good. The gazebo in the center is, you know, something that, you know, is excellent. I, I wanna see a little bit more detail on the mail kiosks and, you know, where people are gonna park, and, um, and apparently the post office will not deliver to individual, uh, places, but the, they will send packages to the doors. So, I, I'm not sure how that works either, but. Um, other than that, uh, you know, we, this is only the first, first, uh, glance at, at it, so we should be able to, uh, you know, fix it up wherever we're, we're going here, so.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh. Mr. Collins.
Well, everybody knows that I'm against this project. I mean, nothing against a developer, whatever, all, all the reasons everybody said about buffers and so forth. I don't think apartments should be plopped in this, in residential areas in Rotterdam. I think it defeats the purpose of what Rotterdam was built on, so I'm, I'm not for this project. Um, but I'm not for any, uh, apartment buildings that are plopped in the residential areas. Um, that's, that's my personal opinion. I wouldn't want them next to my house, and that's how I feel about probably some of the residents. Um, I just don't think it's, uh, what we need in Rotterdam. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Calder.
Well, I, uh, it's funny Clark mentioned that because I, I agree with him on the apartment idea. Uh, I've been saying that for a while now, but, uh, that being said, I just got one other question here. It looks like from the February sixteenth meeting, uh, we were gonna receive a floor plan. Uh, I go, rebuilding elevations we talked about, but I don't see the floor plan with this information we received. Is that something we'll have for the next time this comes up?
Um, I actually have the building plans right now. You would like to see them.
Well, if you got them handy, I just looked through a packet. I didn't, okay, I didn't see, uh, I didn't see that before. All right.
So, here's, yeah, here's the elevations from back. Side.
Those are, those are duplicates of the, uh, ones on Marivo Road, correct?
I thought we saw these, didn't we?
More or less, yeah.
We saw these before. We did see these.
Okay, yeah, from the, for way back. All right, no, that's, I'm fine. I just, uh, I'm fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Signor.
Initially, my, uh, concern was, you know, parallel to, uh, Tom's here on, uh, the impact to the neighbors and, um, you know, the verms are what makes it palatable for them if this, you know, project, uh, uh, finishes through fruition here? So, I'd like to, you know, if the project continues on, I'd like to see these residents that are impacted by this, at least satisfied, you know, satisfied in what they've, um, gotta look out their back doors at, or side doors at, or whatever. But I'm, I'm kinda in line with Tom on, on that.
Okay. Ms. Flansburg.
No, my only issue has been addressed. It's, uh, the, the same as others with the buffering of the neighbors that are most impacted. At least, uh, giving them the opportunity to voice what, what they would like. Um, but then, you know, be reasonable in what the applicant can actually provide and fit in those locations. And, uh, Tom had a good point. It shows a lot of, um, buffering that looks like it will remain untouched, but, uh, I agree with him that if, and if the outcome actually isn't what appears, uh, on the drawings, I'm hoping the, the applicant would be willing to, uh, add additional plantings as needed. That's the only issue I have, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, I think the project is a good project.
Okay, Mr. Del Sandro.
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, could you take that, the, the drawings down, please? There we go. Okay, at this time, there's no action to be taken tonight. ABD needs to coordinate with DPW and Barton LaJusis on the water model of the potential impact to the system and the water supply for the project. That's something you have to do. Other than that, that's all we have for tonight. Uh, there's no action on this tonight, so. Be prepared.
Okay. Thank you.
In your next submission, could you include those, uh, uh, elevations and the floor plans so we can look at them, you know, get a little time to, you know, see what they look like?
Yes.
You know, just a, just a small copy, fine, you know?
Okay.
All right, appreciate that.
Okay, so we're, I guess we're all set. We need someone to call, to. We need someone to call to adjourn this meeting.
Mark.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion made by Mr. Collins?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Del Sandro, thank you. We don't have to have a vote on that one, we're just gonna join. Okay, thank you, guys. Teresa, you can, uh, end our meeting for us, please.